I'd like to call the meeting to order on February 12th at 6:30. Madge, will you say the pledge for us, please? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Burton?
Here.
Almond?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Alneese?
Here.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Public Communications, the City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you are interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the City Council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated, and the individual will be removed immediately. Are there any public communications at this time?
Glad to be back. I just wanted to quickly thank Brian for sending out a letter to the people that came in, I don't know what we did, auditioned for a seat. It was very sweet, and I thought it was a nice consideration to let us know that it was appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Mike Adair, and I've been working with the Willis Community Theater for a long time, and I just want to thank the city and the city staff for the excellent paving job that you guys did out there. It's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Andrew Hosford. I'm here wearing my Little League hat. Willis Club Little League is starting up again. Opening day is April 12th, and so I wanted to invite the new City Council members and returning City Council members to opening day of Little League. We started a program last year where we introduced girls softball, and last year we had three teams. This year, it looks like we're going to have five. It's a little bit of a struggle because they're travel-based, or softball teams, because we don't have enough Little League participants, and so they're traveling around the greater community, and that's pretty cool. And then I'm going to switch hats and put my Rotary hat on, and I wanted to invite you guys to the first inaugural grill and give, and it is a benefit dinner put on by Rotary to feed our community. And so we're doing a, I would say, Texas-style barbecue. We're doing pulled pork and smoked chicken here at the community center on March 1st at 5 o'clock. We have 200 tickets. We've already sold 120 of them. Most of those have gone to businesses that we've solicited sponsorships from, and we're pretty excited to be doing this event. And so I just want to let you guys know about it and see if you're interested in attending, but just excited to be featuring some, a little bit different of a meal in our community to raise funds to those that are in need. The benefits for that are going to the senior center, the food bank, and our daily bread. So that's what I got.
Where is it on market?
It's here at the community center at City Hall.
Anybody else for public communication? Okay, we're moving on.
Thank you for your input, please.
Public Matters is a proclamation for Women's History Month. This proclamation recognizes March 2025 as Women's History Month. It's the 41st Annual Women's History Gala Celebration, whereas in March 1983, the first Women's History Gala Celebration in Mendocino County was held in the Anderson Valley High School. Thereafter each year, it has been held in the city of Willets with the March 2nd celebration marking its 41st anniversary. And whereas the Mendocino Women's Political Coalition presents the Women's History Gala Celebration with American Association of Universities Women, UCAIA. Whereas the aforementioned women's organizations continue to work to increase and acknowledge the roles of women at all levels of community and public service, and to become knowledgeable about issues that affect their equality, and to foster networks that extend and expand the creative, social, and political strength of women. And whereas promoting and celebrating the equality and achievements of all women continues to be at the core of this 2025 celebration of women's history. And the tradition of annual Women's History Gala Celebration is to recognize and honor particular women who exemplify each year's designated theme for contributions in their communities through their field of work. And whereas on Sunday, March 2nd, 2025, the public is invited to attend the 41st Annual Women's History Gala Celebration at 12:00 p.m. at the Space Theater. Women to be honored embody this year's theme, Moving Forward Together, Women Who Educate and Inspire. The theme recognizes women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. Mary?
Therefore, I, Larry Stransky, Mayor of the city of Willets, along with Vice Mayor Matthew Alanase, and Councilmember Gerardo Gonzalez, and Tom Almond, and Bruce Burton, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in the city of Willets. In a witness, therefore, I have here and to set my hand on the cause of seal for the city of Willets to be affixed this 12th day of February 2025.
And Madge Strong is going to receive the proclamation, and I would like to announce that our very own Suprema Rodriguez is one of those that are being recognized at this gala.
Yay.
I just want to add that there were 12 nominees, and only three women were selected to be honored, so I'm really very pleased that Suprema Rodriguez was one of them. And of course, in addition to the service that she has done for the city for so long, she has done enormous other public service in our community, and so she's a very deserving recipient, and I'm really pleased for that. One thing you said was that the annual gala celebrations were held in Willets, but most, almost all of them have been held in UCAIA, so that was a...
That's the proclamation.
It was an error. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madge.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Any public comment for that?
Madge, I just want to thank you for nominating me for this award, and I deeply appreciate the impact that you also have had in the community. I think that whether you're, regardless of the color of your skin, or whether you're male or female, or what the case is, we all have a responsibility to step up, speak up. I see all of you here this evening. You've come to participate in civic engagement, and I think that that's really important. And I know that as a female leader, I have felt the calling since a very young age that it's been my responsibility to step up into the leadership role, and so I'm excited to honor March as Women's History Month. And think about from the perspective of when I was a child, I remember in the '70s, I had my Women's Lib t-shirt. I was very young, but I was very aware of the fact that women didn't have the rights that men did. We didn't have equal rights. I remember the, sadly, I remember in the '90s buying a car in my own name, and I was discussing this with my daughter, that I went to purchase a vehicle, and I wasn't, they didn't want to sell me the car unless my husband signed. And I said, "No, you know, I'm going to sign for this car, and if you aren't going to give me the loan, then I'm fully, you know, financially capable of getting the loan, and I don't want my husband's name on it." And he said, "Oh, you're one of those Women's Libbers." And I said, "Absolutely, I am." I can't imagine a man walking into a dealership to buy a car and someone saying, "Oh, are you a man liberator?" Like, that just doesn't happen. So women have come a long ways, and I think that it's important that we recognize the struggle and where we're headed as women and as a society in general. So thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent calendar. The City Council considers matters listed under the consent calendar as routine. The council will take action with a single motion and a roll call vote. A council member may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion and subsequent action. The following items are presented, as presented are before the City Council for approval or denial. The City Council meeting minutes for January 1st and January 22nd.
21st.
21st and 22nd.
I'd like to move the consent calendar.
I have a comment. Is it okay to comment on the consent?
Up there, please.
Madge Strong, I noticed in the minutes there were a list of committee and agency assignments for the different City Council people, and that was done before Mr. Burton was added as a fifth person. And also, there was at least one item where Jerry Gonzalez has said he needs to recuse himself. And there was at least one item that was not on the list of agencies, which is the Sonoma Clean Power, which I was, had the pleasure to be a representative for the city on that agency. And I wanted to know when there will be an updated list and to make sure that Sonoma Clean Power isn't forgotten, and...
Sonoma Clean Power is actually on there. There's just nobody assigned to it yet.
Okay. That is, we only get one city representative for the whole Mendocino County, so if nobody from Willets wishes to serve on that, it could be somebody from Fort Bragg or Point Arena, but not from UCAIA because they have their own utility, and they aren't part of Sonoma Clean Power.
I was just notified today that Supervisor Hasscheck is on the Sonoma Clean Power Board, and he will be attending the meetings remotely here.
Okay. But he is the Board of Supervisors representative, and the county also gets one city representative. I hope it's somebody from Willets because we're very directly affected by what Sonoma Clean Power does, and I personally just think that's a really important and, to me, very satisfying agency that we, we're fortunate to have, serving Mendocino County. So I just, I don't know if you can, I think that list of appointees should be republicized as soon as it's revised, if that's not already done. But I'm really interested in knowing who our representatives are on different agencies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like a second.
Yes, I'm going to abstain on the minutes where I wasn't. Let me pick out which ones those are.
Councilmember Almond?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alneese?
Aye.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Commissions, agencies, and authorities, there are none. City manager reports and recommendations.
We missed item six.
Oh, sorry. Monthly activity reports. In the packet, there are the matters that do not require action by the City Council but are of public interest. The accounts payable activity report, business license activity report, building permit activity report, all for January 2025. And now we're skipping commissions, agencies, and authorities again. City managers' reports and recommendations. The fire hazards severity zone map is his topic.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is an informational item, and I'm glad we have a full house tonight as well. I'm not sure if every council member has been tracking what CAL FIRE has been looking to do with the fire severity maps across the state. This is through an executive order by Governor Newsom to move this forward. Right now, the state does have a pretty comprehensive fire severity mapping system, but it excludes most municipalities throughout the state. And within the last year, CAL FIRE has changed that practice under the guidance or the direction from the governor's office, and the revised maps, starting in 2025, are going to have the municipalities included. So it's kind of a, you have to do this type of approach from CAL FIRE. Our map has not been released yet. These maps were supposed to be presented to the jurisdictions starting in January. The incidences down in Southern California has delayed the rollout of these maps. District 1 has started. District 2, which includes Mendocino County, which is the four municipalities within the county, will receive our maps on February 24th. From that point, we have essentially 30 days to engage the public, residents, council members, on what those maps show for our community, and generate comments, or solicit comments from property owners and business owners. And this is kind of, we're going to, we will collect these comments, but like I said earlier, the state is moving forward. We're going to track the comments, we're going to collect the comments, we'll package them and present them back to CAL FIRE. But after 30 days, then we have to go through adoption of an ordinance. And from that point, then we have additional time to, if there's high hazard areas identified within the city, then there's some code provisions that we're going to have to adopt from planning overlay districts and some building code to reduce the fire hazard risk. Working with staff, we are looking to have that public forum, at least one public forum after the 24th. We're looking at the middle of March.
Yes.
Did everybody get that email that came down? I got one, and it was, I was waiting for the map, and I didn't have any idea.
The map comes out on February 24th.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were in the second phase, that's why. So we're going to have to revise, so Code Enforcement 1 might have to intervene in some areas where we would have to...
It only will, to get to that level of involvement in changing our existing building codes and zoning provisions, is if we have areas identified as very high hazard. I am not hasing a guess right now what, how the boundaries are going to be depicted for our community. It looks like most of the area is going to fall into a moderate, so that would not require changes to our existing zoning and land use provisions. But once we get the maps, we'll have to decide.
I assume the fire chief is going to be leading the...
We're going to reach out to all the stakeholders, the Firewise Council, the, excuse me, county officials, fire district, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's what I have.
Is there any public comment?
Helen Sims. At what point, after you receive the maps on the 24th, will they be available to the public, and in what manner? Are they going to be electronic or...
The, once the rollout occurs at the state level on the 24th, the maps are going to be on CAL FIRE's website. We're going to download or upload onto our website. Right now, working with Dolores Peterson, City Clerk, we have created an additional tab on our website. There are three documents there that explain this process in more detail, and the consequences for property owners' insurance provisions. So that information is there now.
Okay.
Once that map is released on the 24th, we're going to add a link to our website, so that map's going to be available. And at the public forum, we're still trying to figure out how to depict the map. We don't know if we're going to have large poster size of the map for the whole city, or kind of break out the city in the quadrants and have smaller sheets. The map, the fire severity zones are very broad. They're just kind of overlapping polygons, so it's hard to really, how to convey that in an appropriate sense for the property owners to understand.
And will you solicit comments or questions prior to the public forum, from the public?
We don't know that yet. I mean, ideally, the public forum is going to be that opportunity, and then when the item is presented to the council, it will be at a session like this.
Thank you.
Brian, I think I saw that Phase 1 maps are out already.
Yes.
And it looks like, you know, they're color-coded, and so I didn't try to expand them and get deeper into the...
You can access, basically, all unincorporated counties, unincorporated areas of the state have the maps now. So you can go to the website CAL FIRE, and you'll have Mendocino County, and then you'll come to basically, basically, the municipal boundaries for the city, and it's just blank. There's nothing there. So what's going to happen on the 24th, they're just going to release a map that shows the extension of those boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I have.
Anybody else? Thank you.
I'd like to add that the link to those maps is located under the departments tab on our website. Department recommendations. Adopt a resolution accepting the construction of the steel water main and sewer replacement project 2023-08, and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. Our presenting staff member is Walter Cullen, Services and Facilities Director.
So we just completed, are going to, construction completed the underground water, steel water main replacement and sewer lines, and that basically eliminated the last sections of the old steel water lines, and that'll help in most of the areas now with brown water incidents when we, you know, when we've had those in the past and everything. And part of that project that you brought up today and stuff was part of the paving. We actually went a little bit over on the project because we decided, instead of just doing trench paving, those roads that we were working on the underground were in such bad condition that even trench paving would not have held up long, so we were able to get some MCOTG funds that we'll get reimbursed for to do full paving on some of those streets and lanes, so that helped a lot. Yes?
So Walter, I knew the goal was to eliminate that brown water.
Right.
There's still a chance that we might still get some, right?
Yes.
If we get somebody hitting hydrant or something like that, or...
There's still pockets. These are the main transmission lines, distribution lines for the households and businesses, but there are areas and stuff, and we do a flushing program on those, but there's still a chance, but less of it, much less of a chance now.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to make sure you...
Yeah, yeah. It's not 100% eliminated, but very close.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up on Mr. Cullen's comments, the annual flushing program's going to be starting up in a week or three?
Yeah, very soon. Yeah, yeah.
So, and we're committed now to an annual flushing program, so that reduces the risk of the sediment collection. But you're right, if someone takes out a hydrant, or there's another shock through the system, it's going to disturb the sediment and have it...
You going to have those flush boards yet?
No, not yet. That's another project.
It's for the, it's another, for the deal, yeah.
Is there anybody else from the audience? Okay, let's bring it back up here, please.
No, I just, I just want to say, Walter, how excited I am that this project has been...
Yes.
Has been a long vision of the council and the citizens of the community to get those steel water lines replaced. We know that brown water's been an issue, and this is a huge step, and it's been an investment from us as rate payers. We have had to increase some water rates in order, over time, in order to help pay for this, so this is really a community investment in ensuring that we have safer drinking water.
Yes. It's, we, our system is actually in really good condition for a city our size. It's really nice to see how far along we've come, yes.
And I'm looking forward to less brown water.
Yes, I know. Everyone is.
I'm curious to see when we start doing the flushing, whether or not we're going to see brown water, or we're going to see a reduction in...
It'll be less and less.
And I assume that you're going to come back before the public and let us know, you know, how many reports we've had and the severity of the brown water.
Yeah, we'll issue a report on that and everything, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is sort of a technical question.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry, my name is Garrett Moore. If you don't mind me asking.
Oh, yeah.
What is the process of the flushing? Is that shocking the system on purpose to disturb the sediment and then pump it out?
It gets flushed out through the system, yes, and everything, yeah. And it dislodges, there's always a little bit of sediment in the pipes, and it adheres to the pipes. We're trying to dislodge as much as possible, yes. Yeah.
All right.
And I want to note that the sediment isn't harmful. It's mineralization in there and everything. It's manganese, iron, things like that, yeah.
Can we have the motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt resolution 2000, no, it's not 2023, is it?
Project 2023-08.
Oh, okay, that we move, oh, I see, project 2023-08, and adopt the accompanying resolution, accepting the project.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Alneese?
Aye.
And Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Next item is to adopt a resolution authorizing the advertisement of the Community Enhancement Project, project number 2403, to include solar pedestrian sidewalk lights along Main Street, security lighting in Bathcock Park, and a banner system over Main Street. Our presenting staff member is Walter Cullen, Services and Facilities Director.
Now, the water is a great project that you don't see. This is when you're going to see a lot of results. Community Development's been working really hard on enhancement projects that are going to help pedestrians and people in town. We have streetlights in town, but a lot of the sidewalks aren't well-lit. What's being proposed is we're going to go out to bid, that's what we're looking to do. We're going to be putting solar lights in along Main Street for pedestrians. They'll also have bracketing that they can have banners hung for them for, like, when we have graduations, things like that, or they can have floral displays on them and stuff, so they're very versatile. The other thing is, at the, over by Oak Street, there's going to be a banner system. We've had some banners up and everything that advertise the car show and other events and everything. This will be a permanent system that'll be in place, that'll be safer, and a lot more versatile, and be able to be put up very easily for groups that are advertising events for the city.
Is there any public comment?
I think it's worth noting that many of these improvements are being paid for with the Clean California Grant, and a lot of people ask about what is Clean California Grant funding, and this is one of them. And when we were talking at the Transportation Committee level, which committees are very, very important, it's an opportunity for members of the public to come and have that informal discussion. The discussion about those lamps came up, and initially, when we were talking about them, they were going to be powered by electricity. they were going to be powered by electricity. And we said, can we make them, can we make them solar powered? And can we add the hangers on there so that we can make sure that we're honoring our high school seniors and, and other things like that for beautification? So I'm really happy to see that as the planning of the grant has continued to move forward.
Yes.
That the things that we've heard from the community that they wanted and being eco-friendly minded and making sure that it's solar has continued to happen. That was, that was important. And acknowledging Greta Conny, who also worked pretty hard on this project at the planning level and then the staff.
Yes.
The staff that, of course, did the heavy lifting, thank you.
The solar lighting is a bonus. There's less infrastructure disruption. We won't be cutting through sidewalks. There's no electrical. They'll be off-grid for emergencies. We'll always have lighting, and so it's a really good system. You know, many years ago, Willets was the solar capital of the world in the 70s. And, you know, we're doing a lot of solar projects right now and getting back there. So it's a great project for the community.
Walter, will it, will they last all night?
They'll be, they'll be on timers, yeah, they will. And they dim a little bit so they're not so bright. But they'll provide, you know, pedestrian lighting along the sidewalks. The streetlights are there now, but that provides street lighting. This will give more lighting along the businesses and along the sidewalks.
Okay, and then design-wise, from what I saw, they look similar to the ones that they have on Highway 20. There, I think it's Lucerne or one of those. There is, have you been by that area?
I can't recall which.
Dusty, do they look the same as those?
I don't think they're quite as tall, but they have that sort of bell shape.
Yeah, they're arched, they're arched in a cover and stuff, yeah. They're, they're very nice looking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Director Sekeria, would that project include the crosswalks? Because we've been talking about the crosswalks for over two years and more. Because it's very, very difficult to cross the street, Main Street at night. I mean, I take my flashlight and wave it so the cars would stop. So I have to because nobody can see me. So all our crosswalks, like in Petaluma, you push the light, all the lights comes on the crosswalk so cars see that there is somebody that's going to cross it. And then when you finish crossing it, then the lights goes off.
These are, yeah, these are just sidewalk lights. That's would be a separate project, yeah.
How can we make that project since we have the fund to take care of our crosswalks so we can have safer streets? I'm just asking.
We're looking at other projects that we have with MCOT that we're looking at getting funding for safety projects, including a striping program. And we have looked at the ideas of lit up stop signs and crosswalks. It is being looked at. It's not part of this project, though. This is a separate project. Yeah, it's not part of this. This is just sidewalk lighting.
Do we have money to make that project part of it? Since we're getting a grant, hopefully we can get the grant with all the changes going on. But I'm just asking.
It's something we'll look into, yes, definitely. We are looking into safety projects and striping projects, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, we do have funding that we have received from MCOT. It's about $35,000, $38,000 for crossing improvements along corridor, the Main Street corridor. It's going to be striping signage and potentially.
Safety pedestrian improvements, yes, yeah.
So we do have an opportunity. We do receive the funding. That's another project that's being programmed right now with Walter's team.
Garrett, again, another technical question. What is the scope of Main Street that we're talking about with this project?
It runs from north of Oak Street all the way past.
East Commercial, correct. Dusty, I think it comes right past the lights. We've got them closed in North Spur.
Essentially, it's from East Commercial Street. It's about East.
Focusing on Old Town.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I noticed you said Oak Street was where the banner.
The banner is, yes.
Does anybody know, is that visible from the intersection?
It's as close as we can get it because Highway 20, that intersection is controlled by Caltrans. And we're getting as close as we can.
It looks like on our toes.
Yeah, no, exactly. We, we put it into place as close as we could get. We had to get encroachment for that, yes. It is, it will be visible, though.
I thought so, I was, I was trying to put it up on the street.
Yeah.
I talked to the people that were doing the parking lot today, and they said it would take about 24 to 30 days to cure those five, those pieces that came up. And then that they'll go on from there. And they have all of them poured and the waste taken away from them. And I was surprised that they were that high. It is, I am sure that it's because they're all supposed to be leveled and going from there. And I think it was a very nice job. And I'm glad that the city did this because people that I've talked to are real happy because they can park there in the evening and not just go through a dark place to get back to their car. So that's a step in the right direction, I think. Thank you very much.
Yeah, those pedestals were made high enough and so that they protect the lights, that people don't run into the lights. And for structural, there'll be nine of them there, so it's going to give really nice lighting in the parking lot.
Thank you.
And those are solar?
Those are also solar, yeah.
Is there any more public comment?
Parking locations, it doesn't say in here that this is going to be in a parking lot. This is the, is this part of the.
He was bringing up a separate project that's nearby, a solar project, yeah. Yeah, that was, yeah, sorry about the confusion. It's the one that's going on right now, yes, yeah.
May I call for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the company resolution authorizing advertisement for the Community Enhancement Project, project number 24-03.
I'll second.
Councilmember Burton?
Hi.
Almond?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Alanese?
Hi.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
The next item is presentation of a proposed park improvement located within Bud Snyder City Park, funded by the Clean California Local Grant Program. Presenting staff member is Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director.
I was noted that I was too close. Is this going to happen here or do I need to listen to it or what? Yeah, it says that.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yep, so.
But we're, we're not voting, this is just presentation.
This is presentation.
Well, that's true, that's true. No actions being taken, it's just a presentation, you can stay.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, we need to pick a location for the pavilion. So it's not like a decision by resolution, but. It's my third attempt and.
Okay, I'm going to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess to be prompt. Good evening, Mayor Alanese.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, Dusty Dooley, I'm your Community Development Director. So what we have for you tonight is a presentation update on the various park improvements that are proposed for Bud Snyder Park, sometimes referred to as City Park, that are also funded by the Clean California Grant. So this is a presentation that I've given before. I'm probably going to move through it a little bit quicker than, than I have in the past just because a lot of council members have seen it before or sitting council members are sitting in the audience before here. But please tell me to slow down. So it's a kind of, it's always important to sort of, how do we got to this moment? You know, one of the specific improvements, there are many proposed for Bud Snyder Park. The one that's received, you know, a good amount of discussion is the pavilion itself. So there's a little bit more focus on that. And that's, although we're here to talk about all the, all the improvements, really what it come, you know, what we're running a decision from and direction from council tonight is, is the location of the pavilion that's proposed here. So, you know, again, we didn't come up with all these ideas on our own. You know, we understood that through the Farmers Market Director that there was interest in moving back to City Park and that having some, some shade would certainly support that effort and be appreciated. Then we understood the opportunity to apply for a competitive grant, became available on February 14th of 2023. We quickly moved to hold an open house and gather public input. And then, as always the case, we held a public hearing with council and got council support to go ahead and put our best foot forward with submitting a grant application to include the improvements that I'll, I'll give an overview of here in just a moment. At the same time, the East Commercial Street Plan was being developed. There was some overlap there. But really, that first input session was right before the grant was due. So while there is some, some overlap, we did, you know, pay attention to the input from the East Commercial Street Plan public session. You know, they, they were two separate projects and timelines. And then in October 2023, we found out that we were in the minority of receiving the grant. This was a statewide opportunity. 18% of the applications were awarded. The city was lucky enough to be awarded $2.77 million. And then we executed the grant agreement on December. And I do want to point out, that's important because essentially what you're saying by executing a grant agreement is that we promised to fulfill and complete the improvements that we identified. Just real quick, these are some of the notes that we received during that community forum that I mentioned in the timeline earlier. So, yeah, outdoor pavilion, yes, bring Farmers Market to City Park, soft landing turf under the play structure, an outdoor cover structure with seating for events, parties, Farmers Market. So, so again, we didn't develop these ideas in a vacuum. There, there was public input that led to the improvements that are being funded by the grant. Okay, this was the map that was included in our application. And on the, on the side there, I bolded the, the various improvements that are designated for Bud Snyder Park. The big ones, again, being the pavilion, the upgrading of the bathroom, replacing some of the older playground equipment, upgrading the surfacing of the, of the playground equipment there.
I have a question. So this is the original, so you originally had it set center?
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll say that there wasn't a ton of thought that went into that. It, you know, we, we thought our sort of thought, we have probably on the northern side is where it's going to end up. But it was a placeholder on a map at that point, more so than really deep thought given to it.
Thank you.
Okay. So what you have here is some differences between the 30% designs that were developed by SHN and first brought to, to council. And so I want to just highlight the, the changes there. So based on a request from Farmers Market, understanding that their existing vendors couldn't fit within, you know, a 2,500 square foot pavilion. And really, we're, we're talking about, you know, 20-foot sections. So you really don't get to 25. It's really, you know, 2,400 and then moving in 20-foot sections beyond that, either wider or longer. But based on that request, we, we thought we could stretch the budget and realize a 3,200 square foot. And then we shifted the location to the northeast corner, added the driveway and the walkway. And, and the idea primarily was, that was the, the more underutilized portion of the park, so it was a little bit out of the, the way, didn't interrupt the, the green space, allowed for a shorter driveway and, and easier connections over to the bathroom and the playground. We also, originally, we're going to just replace the existing bathrooms. But when we ended up looking harder at the cost of that, to replace it, we were going to actually end up with less toilets or fixtures. The integrity of the existing bathroom's fine. So what we're looking at doing now, and we've vetted this with Caltrans, is we're going to spend the money to remodel the bathroom, put a new roof on it, upgrade all the fixtures, the flooring, et cetera. And then at the request of the Farmers Market, we are adding a storage area on the eastern side of the, of the existing bathroom there. And of course, that'll be available for city. That'll be available for other users as well. And then originally, we had the, the water ball fill station over here on the, the southern end of the park. But we've decided to move it in, next to the existing fountain over by the restroom. So there's some cost savings there, too. So then we came, and last time we were in front of council proposing with referencing those 30% revisions, we did get some very specific feedback, which was to reduce the size of the pavilion closer to what was originally proposed in the grant. So we reduced from 3,200 square feet back down to 2,400 square feet. And then shift the location of the pavilion, rather than it being over in that northeast corner that was shown on the previous side. It's now towards the center of the, or the center of the, of the northern line, again, at the back of the woodchips. And then you can see the, the new driveway and then the modified pathways connecting over to the bathroom. The other thing is, as we were revisiting this idea to get these updated revisions from SHN, we also added down here, upgrading some additional pathways within the park and bringing them up to ADA standards as well. So we'd like to see if we can accomplish that work with the grant funds as well. So that's another, those are the three changes that you see from the previous designs. And here, I'm just showing the side by side so there's an opportunity to kind of see the, the comparison here.
Can I ask a question? So if, in the design for the northeast corner pavilion area, that does not include the additional ADA, that's not a great.
No, it, it can.
So it can?
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay. But doesn't necessarily exclude that possibility?
Yeah, so really what the, the focus is, is do we want the pavilion here or do we want it?
Check.
That's, that's the main question for tonight that staff is anxious to get direction on so that we can move forward with finalizing designs, get this thing out to bid and meet our grant timeline.
Great.
Two quick questions, Dusty. 2,400, does that mean that it is 100 by 24?
It'd be 40 by 60.
40 by 60.
Instead of 40 by 80.
And, and is it, got lights in it?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have minimal lights for security purposes.
Okay, with a big wire.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be connected to the bathroom. That's being shown here on the underground. So we'll, and we'll have outlets, too, for people to plug in. And we'll have, we'll be able to lock them so that people can't get to them at night. them so that people can't get to them at night.
So I have a technical question for our attorney. I was here the night that was discussed, and Supreme was the mayor, and there was lots of public input on it. And then when Councilmember Khan made the motion, her motion was to move it to the center. But there hadn't been any discussion of that all night. And then, and there wasn't any, I mean, that was a big change, and there wasn't any public input when that motion was made. And the concern that I have that I've heard is everything looked like it was going to be going, the one on the left, until the motion was made, seconded, and council voted on it without any public input. So my question is, is there was a change made and maybe former mayor could answer or could, without public input on the final motion, should we allow public input now for moving it and with the possibility of returning back to the original location?
Can I just add for clarification? Ms. Rodriguez was recused herself from that.
Okay, okay, got it, okay. To Matt.
I don't have any specific recollection about whether there was public comment or not. I'll take your word for it that there was not, which seems peculiar that there was not public comment on it, but.
Well, there was public comment until, up until the motion, but then the motion changed everything, or not, it changed a major decision of it, and then there wasn't public input with the change.
Well, there probably should have been, but regardless, I don't think this council now is bound by what was moved previously. And we have a different council sitting today, and we have an opportunity for public comment today, and an opportunity for newly seated council members today to weigh in on this. And I think that you are not bound by a decision previously made. Place it in the middle.
Dusty, at that meeting, we had questions regarding, I guess some of the public had asked questions regarding cement, not cement or whatever. Were those answered?
Yeah, so the community concerns included, and probably one of the more vocal concerns was the fact that we were using concrete and steel to support the structure. Davey Bowles is our building official, intelligent guy. Probably between him and I, and again, he's more the expert, so I'm leaning into him, maybe 25, 30 conversations with different members of the public probably resulted in about maybe six hours of time. So, which is fine, that's fine. But what it continued to come down to, and we again took ideas, kind of wrapped our brains, looked at what other jurisdictions, what might be out there. But recognizing you have ADA standards, recognizing, yeah, there are some materials where you can install it and it might be ADA compliant for a moment, but as soon as you let trucks go in there, as soon as time happens, then you have a high maintenance issue and it's not, it's really not feasible to build it with something else and sit here and honestly say you're not creating a liability issue for the city. So no, we have not come up with a viable alternative to recommend to the council beyond concrete. We did, you know, based on council's direction, we did reduce the size of it. And, you know, I think, is it on this one, just to kind of show, this is, the slide's still showing a 40 by 80 pavilion, but again, right now, the proposal is 40 by 60 based on council's direction at the last meeting. You have some numbers there giving you approximate reduction in green space, letting you know the pavilion size versus the overall. But what I wanted to note was, you know, there is an opportunity to replace the woodchips with green space here on the northern and eastern side of the park. So, you know, in talking to the crew, that is feasible, that is something that can be accomplished. We also would like to look at the opportunity to replace those trees over there that seem to be pretty stunted and maybe find a different place for them and put in some bigger trees and kind of start over on that end of things. But that's an available kind of opportunity to mitigate some of the loss of green space as well.
So if it did get moved back to that corner, we could still add trees, we could still put that greenery in there?
Yeah, and I mean, it holds true, yeah, the answer's yes.
Okay.
Dusty, on that, in that configuration, what's the booth size for a?
Yeah.
Is it, so are you thinking you'd get four rows of produce in there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, and it's a good question. Unfortunately, the person who might be able to answer that isn't here, and I don't have the answer myself. You know, it's a 40 by 60 space. I mean, I could take a guess at it, but my guess would probably be as good as yours, Bruce. Councilmember Burton.
Bruce, I think the thought of that meeting, at least the thought was that this thing was becoming bigger than the, you know, original design and maybe we, and it was never going to accommodate every vendor, but provide some space, probably first come, first served would get that. And so the intent was, it wasn't going to be, everybody that showed up wasn't.
I was just trying to figure out if it's four rows of vendors or two rows of vendors.
Yeah.
And just to make the best use of the space.
Yeah, there'll be an opportunity, you know, I mean, from talking to Mr. Foley, the director of the farmer's market, this isn't going to be enough to accommodate their existing vendors. That was why there was the request to enlarge it. You know, and again, I think as Mr. Foley was making the request, I don't know that he had the idea of like stealing or at least the concrete flooring mine, so I want to put that out there, too. But there'll be an opportunity for vendors to set up canopies and interact outside the footprint of the pavilion, too. And it certainly will have more shade than where they are now.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would entertain listening from the public and taking input. I'm not necessarily married at this point in time to one spot or the other, but I think the idea was to lower the footprint and was the intent at that point. But if there are public members here that want to add input, I would love to hear from them tonight.
I agree. Do we have any public comment? Please, Rodriguez.
Suprema Rodriguez, Councilmember Burton, if we had three rows of 12, that would be, and they had a 10 by 10, you could adequately fit that in there and that would accommodate 36 10 by 10 stations, by my estimate, yeah, yeah. And then Councilmember Alman, I did recuse myself, and I have recused myself throughout this process. I did attend the community events, and then of course, I replayed it back on YouTube anytime I had to use myself and step outside. And I haven't had much opportunity because I had to recuse myself in my mayor, in my role as mayor. I do have two questions. First one, easy, and that is picnic tables that were initially envisioned on the west side of the park, are those still in place? Are we expecting to see those picnic tables? And will they be covered?
Yes, there will be picnic tables, both covered and uncovered. We also have some chess tables to put out within the park, and we're still eyeing at least some of those picnic tables to be along the western border of the park.
Okay, great, glad to hear that. There's been so much conversation about the pavilion. I wanted to make sure those were still there. And then the most pressing concern that I've had with this project, which I'm thrilled with the project, has really just been about parking. I'm concerned about the impact to the homes and the businesses that are in the surrounding areas, all the way over from Commercial Street over to Main Street, and what the parking plan might be. I'm hoping that there's not just a parking space plan, but there's a safe route plan. So if the intention is that all of the extra parking, we're assuming that they're going to park at City Hall, that we make sure that on farmer's market day, that there's nothing happening at City Hall so that people can park here. And then for those of us who can remember, we know that on Commercial Street, there was a major accident that happened and somebody, a local community member, passed away. Unfortunately, not all people observe the traffic laws and drive at a safe speed on Commercial Street. So just having a plan in place for if they're going to be crossing Commercial Street, if that's not the plan, where might people be parking when they go to use the farmer's market and the extra use from parties or events, that sort of thing? Just wanting to make sure that you're really thinking about that because otherwise, we're going to find that businesses won't have any on-street parking and potentially, people will be parking in businesses' private parking or in individuals' home driveways and that sort of thing. And we want this to be a good thing and not something that becomes an aggravation for the neighbors in the area.
They can park around the railroad.
They can. So then if we're going to use the railroad, do we have permission for that? Do we have a safe, do we have a safe access? But that doesn't mean necessarily that we have permission, or maybe we do. So clarification on that would be really helpful. Will there be signs directing people like, "Park here," so that they're, you know, otherwise, if there is no sign saying, "Park here," they may not know where they're supposed to park. So I'm just wondering about the parking plan, and you don't have to solve that tonight. Just please, at some point, let us know.
I'm curious if you have an opinion on the location.
For parking?
No, for the, in the corner or in the center?
I have no preference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So Madge Strong, and I was on the council at the time that we discussed this, and I'll have to take responsibility for giving my opinion that a central location for the pavilion appealed to me more aesthetically and as a kind of a center, visual centerpiece for the park. There was a lot of discussion about the location prior to the council taking up their discussion of it. It was a hot topic in written comments, and a lot of people were here, and there were a lot of people that objected to the location at the northeast corner, but we didn't explicitly do a pro and con. Do you like it there or do you like it there? And I think clearly, some of the opposition to the northeast corner were people that lived, you know, within 30 feet of it or 50 feet of it. And the same is true, wherever you put it, there will be, you know, there will be opinions, pro and con. I liked the central location, really, as I said, this is an aesthetic thing. I would be totally happy if it ends up at the northeast corner, it's going to be fine also. So I don't object strongly, I just liked it in the center better. And I don't think it detracts from any of the other uses of the park, probably not really in either of those locations. We have a nice, very functional and attractive park, so if we end up moving it. One thing I was concerned about is the amount of paving, and when you do this side by side, it's not just the footprint of the pavilion itself, but also the amount of sidewalks in and out and the vehicle access. I would like to see that minimized as much as possible, and I do like the idea of not wasting, not wasting is the right word, but we devoted a lot of footage there along both perimeters of the park for this, these woodchips instead of grass. And I know a lot of people said, you know, why did we do that? And then the trees did not thrive for whatever reason, however, whatever caused that. But I think improving the grassy areas, you know, replacing woodchips with grass, improving the tree health would be positives in either location that we end up with. I still prefer the central location, but I'm not going to be unhappy either way.
Oh, I do remember some discussion. I remember a few people that objected to the northeast corner because they live on that corner. I also do not remember a vote being taken. There was discussion among the council, but I think, you listened to the tape, was there an actual vote? Because the order to move it to the center, I don't think came from the council. So that's something to consider.
Give for match.
There was direction given to staff, it wasn't a vote. It was not a vote, okay, good. I hope my memory isn't bad. I will just put in a voice for keeping it in the northeast corner because it's less of a trip to get, for the trucks to get in if they need to unload that way. Otherwise, in the middle, it's going to be trucks in and out and blocking the sidewalk that way. And my memory of the farmer's market from pre-COVID was like four, almost four lines of vendors, and it spilled from the east end to the north end of that northern thing. And it was just beautiful because it had the grass under it and people were playing, there was music, it spilled out. I'm not so worried about how many vendors can fit under the shade because it's going to spill out into the park as far as it can. It was a regular weekly event that attracted a lot of people downtown. So that's my preference. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to confuse the whole thing. From an overview, I would say the northeast corner looks more aesthetic, but I can also picture how we're all going to actually see it is from Main Street, and I like the idea that it will be out from behind the bathrooms. So I think, and also for ease of Dusty's job, maybe it should stay in the center, is my thought. My only criticism with the center design is that awkward sidewalk there, how it kind of enters the existing stuff at a weird angle, that, which is fine, it can probably be landscaped, that's a problem that can be landscaped away. And I also have to agree that if we already know that the size of it is too small, then probably save the money, put it towards other projects like the ADA compliance that can take it as far as possible, essentially. That's my two cents.
May I ask a question?
Please.
My name is Henry Rude, and I live at 124 State Street, right across from this proposal. I've been there for a little over 20 years, and one of the reasons I purchased my house at that location is because of the park across the street. Not only for the beauty of the park, but for the joy in experiencing the community, enjoying At any rate, the part of the park that is most utilized at this point is this wide open area of that lawn. It's where children run just for the joy of running. It's where people throw balls for their dogs and their dogs race across that lawn. To put something in the middle of that would take away a vital usage of the park. And, you know, I see it all day, every day, now that I'm retired. I would like to see the smallest footprint possible in keeping as much lawn area unobstructed as possible for the usage of the park. So I didn't know there was a possibility of maybe getting rid of the woodchips. I have never seen anybody sit on the woodchips. It doesn't happen. But people utilize the lawn. And if we could get rid of the woodchips and put lawn there, even if the trees are small, it's a little bit of shade and nobody can use that now. So for the usage of the park, for the enjoyment of the community, I highly recommend, if we have to have a pavilion, that we put it as far to the side as possible, leaving as much open green space as possible. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, I'm back. Go ahead.
Yeah, let's go ahead and have.
I've lived across the street from City Park for 33 years. I would say the center of the park, every sunny day is full of people. The northwest corner is almost always empty, a nice little spot. If the pavilion was sitting over there in the corner, it would not only have its own space, its own place.
You said northwest.
I'm sorry.
Northeast.
Northeast, thanks. Got a little rattled tonight. It would not only have its own space, there's a really nice mature cork tree on the corner there that would add to the appearance, making it look really nice as opposed to being this sort of sum, the way I see it, in the middle of the park. And it would definitely not break up the park. The other thing is, I'm sorry, Michael Foley is not here tonight because I've had long conversations with him about the pavilion. He's the manager of the farmer's market, he's the one that started this conversation. And he has told me that several times, that for the farmer's market, they feel the corner is better. He sent me an email that said, "I didn't want it to be in the middle of the park," because the arrangements in the corner are better and because he understands the neighborhood. I understand wherever you put the pavilion is going to be in front of somebody who's going to have a problem. The two people who oppose the corner, Ms. Boudalier, who's a catty corner from it, was not so concerned about the location as opposed to the fact that she thought the pavilion generally would cause, bring. pavilion generally would cause, bring people that she didn't think ought to be there. And then the other one, Ms. Beers, who lives two doors down, the very next block, can't even, hardly can see it. She's here only half the year. She can't even see the pavilion from her house. But I understand, I respect their feelings. But I feel it would face one house on the corner. That house has been vacant off and on for years. I think it's a sometimes rental. There's hardly anybody there. It would be minimum impact to the neighborhood. And I've talked here many times before, trying to help out the city. I've never, ever come here to speak for myself or my neighborhood, but I'm sure I'm doing so tonight. I think it's for the best interest of everybody to have it in the corner there. Thank you.
Andrew Husford, I think you'd probably put it in the northeast and you'd take away those shavings. Most everybody would be happy as long as they're happy to have a pavilion. I also think that reducing the size probably isn't the best option from my perspective. Just knowing, moving into things and you think you have enough space and in a year you realize that you wish you had that extra 20, 25%. So you might just go back to the original plan you had and remove the shavings and call it good. Except for the ADA improvements, that sounds like a good idea based off of our community's history with that type of thing. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Dr. Rude. And I want to say that there are many of us considering starting a fund to replace the trees with more mature trees that will grow into shape. And it's really not going to be that much money. It's a couple hundred dollars per tree. And so that's in the plans as far as I'm concerned because so many people talk about it. Thank you. Oh, my name's Robin Leeler. Sorry.
Garrett Morgan, I wanted to, the couple of gentlemen over here changed my heart. He mentioned dogs running after balls and I was like, oh no, it can't be in the middle. That's all wrong. So yeah, just pretend I didn't say that it looked better in the center.
If we're going on round two for public comment, could I ask a request? I know that sometimes up here you can't hear, but sometimes it's difficult to hear because somewhere in the back we're hearing constant chatter. And if you could make sure that anybody who's talking during public comment is quiet so that we can hear the speakers, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any further public comment. I'd be curious about comments from my.
Actually, Dusty, do you need a motion or just a final direction?
Yeah, I mean, there's no legal requirement for you to vote. I don't believe, we don't have a resolution for you. I really just wanted to bring these improvements in front of the public and get input and then, you know, get council direction. So just, I don't need a formal vote. But I do need clear direction.
What about location?
Well, that's what I wanted to kind of.
Yes, please, sir.
So what I was going to suggest, I think at the time, I recollect my vote was Magic said, move it in the middle. And by that point, I think we were getting bogged down into cement, no cement or whatever. I think I wanted to basically honor the original grant. But at this point, I'd be willing to move it into the northeast corner, keeping the smaller footprint to honor the wishes of those folks that didn't want the huge thing. But, and basically, you guys can work on getting rid of the wood chips or all that down the road. Only concern I have is the no parking or parking along the State Street because I think that, I think if we regulate it to where during, like in the past, where during farmer's market time, there'd be no parking, that's fine. But the rest of the time, the residents need to be able to park there. And I used to park there, take my kids there when the park was busy, so I don't want to. That's just a suggestion on my side.
Understood. Councilman Almond, would you like to share anything?
I agree. And the corner is the right way to go. I'll just tell you, Michael's complaint about the whole thing is, not new, we're talking about tonight, but the playground. And you said it's going to have pieces of rubber there. And I just don't think people come to the gateway of Redwoods and walk on rubber. And I think rubber disintegrates. I think it's bad for us and I'd like to stick with wood, but.
So originally in the grant, and again, this was based on public comment, to make the playground surfacing safer and make the equipment more accessible to folks. So that's where the idea of the rubberized surfacing came from. And then we heard through the last public forum, which you were here for, that there was concerns about the material. Was it safe for the environment? We heard from Mr. Kameroff that his daughter, where she lives, she's seen, park's going the opposite way with it, where there, where it used to be a trend, I guess, to do the rubberize and now move back. So this was, and then I've heard from my own mother, that she likes the wood chips because the kids like playing in it and et cetera. So this was developed as a compromise. This is a photo of another park somewhere in California. I forget the exact location. This was provided by the group that's going to be, that we're purchasing the playground. The equipment firm is going to be doing the installation. This was seen as a compromise or an idea where we could maintain some of the surfacing as wood chips, but then also have the pathways to the playground equipment as well as the area underneath the equipment with the rubberized surfacing so that we were maintaining the goal that's found in the East Commercial Street Plan of improving the integrity and safety. And something, again, we heard in public comment leading up to the grant. So we backed off doing the entire park without surfacing. And now the recommendation from staff is to do something like this, that's customized for our park across the street.
Hybrid.
Hybrid, sure.
It's also more accessible.
Yes, yeah.
And I like that because I think it gives an opportunity for the folks that have limited mobility. You know, I see a lot of folks on scooters that if they wanted to ride there with their grandkids, their grandkids could play. So I like this.
So were your questions answered tonight?
Well, I was hoping, you know, Ms. Councilman Burton, did you have anything to add or opinion about placement?
Yeah, I suppose I could come up with an opinion if I thought about it a little more. I'm not that excited about it, the project. I mean, I think the pavilion ought to be for the community, not for, I'm trying to find the value of that structure for the community, not just the farmer's market. I mean, the farmer's market can put up its shade canopies. They do it all over the state of California every week. And it worked fine before. So that isn't a real driver to me. I guess my sense of balance, you know, just the historic nature of the park and, I mean, there was a park pavilion there once before. And it was centered in the park. And I don't know, that's just my nature. Somebody else said it too, is I kind of like stuff centered, you know. But, you know, I'm happy to be the junior member on here and I'm not going to try to upset an apple tart. The city will do just fine putting it in the corner.
Yes, sir.
So just to clarify a little bit, as we were having discussions, not necessarily with council, with the public, it kept getting called the Farmer's Market Pavilion. And I found myself correcting people. I said, no, it's not the Farmer's Market Pavilion. When the Farmer's Market's not using it, there'll be picnic tables in there. It'll be available for birthday parties. You know, we'll probably use it for when we do the clean canvas events and other events that are planned for the park. So the hope is, is that it'll be utilized much more than just the farmer's market. Obviously, the idea originally came from the farmer's market. You know, staff felt it was important to get their input, recognizing there was a lot of support for them within the community. They were interested in moving back. So we certainly were making sure to get their input and have them involved in the process. But, you know, I was correcting people when we called it Farmer's Market Pavilion.
Well, I'll go over recently how long it took to reach some of these decisions. I think we batted around this idea long enough. I do feel there's a consensus about the northeast corner. I'm certainly in favor of that for all the reasons that people have stated. Could go either way, could be a pickle either way. People would be happy one way or the other. But I do feel like there's somewhat of a consensus on the council here to go with the northeast corner and then to work with the other, Mr. Foley and the other insurgent parties with trees and the, and the stuff like that.
So if I can just repeat what I understand and then what staff's going to be doing after tonight is moving forward with putting together final designs and then getting bids and then coming back to council to award those bids hopefully, using the grant funds.
That's what I understand.
So what it is, is the northeast corner is the preference. We'll reduce the size to 2,400 square feet from 3,200 square feet. We are going to be using concrete. And then we found support, maybe lukewarm support from some for this hybrid model for the playground surface.
Thank you for your work on this.
Very much.
Okay, we're going to have our mayor rejoin us.
There's nothing for council announcements, communications and reports. Oh, wait, no, is there?
We're on a left thing, yes.
Councils. Number 10. City Council announcements, communications and reports. Does anybody have anything to report out from a meeting you've gone to this past week or two?
I went to the EDFC meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday, and it was just an introduction for people that, and it was about three new people and I was one of them. And the meeting will be, the general meeting will be Thursday and then it will be in May, you know, middle of May. But that was an interesting thing and it's the first one out of about eight that I'm in, so thank you.
I went to a LAFCO meeting on the third and we had a workshop on the Elk County Water District Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence Update, the Potter Valley Irrigation District and Municipal Service Review. And we reviewed a draft memorandum of understanding with the Mendocino Coast Recreational and Park District to fund preparation of municipal service review. They approached LAFCO offering to help pay for part of it because their schedule wasn't quite up, but they need the, I guess they need the review. It's something they're pursuing, so, and that's all I have.
On the fifth, I was at a museum meeting here representing the council. And the museum is free now. You don't have to pay to go to the museum. And we welcome people to go to the museum. And they're going through a nonprofit, taking over of the county museum with the county still taking care of the maintenance and paying for the director and so forth. So it's a very interesting time for the museum and they're looking to do some new exhibits this year. And they're, I see Marcy's here, they're excited to work with Frontier Days for next year's 100th anniversary because Frontier Days is so important to us. So the museum is up to speed on that, we hope. And we have very important people attending that meeting, right, Marcy? And then I attended the IMCOG meeting this last Monday for a four-hour meeting. And it was mainly an overview of IMCOG. And for those of you who don't know, Mendocino Council of Government, there's a representative from each city there and then two representatives from the Board of Supervisors and an at-large committee member. And it's a totally bureaucratic meeting, but it's a very important meeting. And it deals with millions of dollars coming from Caltrans and so forth to make sure that money is spent equally across the county so city, one city doesn't get more than their fair share or the county doesn't get everything and so forth. So it's a very interactive meeting that if you really want to go, I would encourage you to go and you could cure amnesia, but, or insomnia, I'm sorry, insomnia. But it was two meetings I've done, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Rudes?
I had no, nothing to report. Thank you.
No, I would just share with the public that a couple weeks ago, I and a colleague, Councilman Almond, was able to attend the League of California City training. I just think the public should know that as new people, we're looking at necessary training, minimal training, some basic items. And it was fascinating to meet our colleagues and really in the area, in the regular entire area. And I'm looking forward to working with them and getting deeper involved with the League's activities. I'm also part of the Finance Committee and we have not yet met. And we're going to arrange a time that works for all the people involved with the Finance Committee. And as soon as we work out that time and date, we'll make sure that everybody knows about that. So for those of you who would like to participate in the Finance Committee and to share your thoughts and to hear what the city is doing, we'll keep you informed. Thank you.
Can we publicly talk about tomorrow meeting since it was last minute located, last minute posted?
Tomorrow, we have a special meeting scheduled at noon. I have posted the agenda on the website. The agenda is also out on our bulletin board out in the front. The topic of discussion is the rail trail project.
It's consideration of a bid protest and possible award of the project.
Thank you.
There was a bid opening involving nine contractors who bid on the job. And there was a determination of who the apparent low bidder was. And the next lowest bidder lodged a protest asserting that there were some technical errors in the low bidder's bid. And so the council will hear that bid protest and either accept it or reject it. If they reject it, they'll move on and consider the possible award of the project if they look good.
And I have property, or I have interest in property within 300 feet of the proposed trail, so I am recusing myself and will not be attending the meeting.
Anybody else?
Is that the pump that's saying?
We need to come to a thing where you can hear the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Hello, Garrett Moore.
Sorry, I just remember the mic is for the people.
Right, right, right. Of course. Thank you, Andy, by the way. So that'll be a standard format agenda and all that and public comment, the whole process? Okay.
It does have just the one item on there, so it's standard format for a special meeting.
Okay. Thank you, that was all.
The trail starts at Commercial Street and goes to.
Suprema Renegus, I have a question about committee's Major Kay. We hadn't met because we were waiting for the new council to be seated and there's a vacancy on it. And I'm wondering what your timeline for accepting applicants is going to be and when we can expect that to be filled?
That's a great question. Mr. Ben, can you hear just that? Are we going to be filling that seat?
That was a discussion I was going to have with the mayor. So we do need to fill a vacancy on that appointed body. I did check with the city clerk. We have an outstanding application that was submitted previously, but we did not act on it. So the question I was going to have with the mayor is, are we going to put a new notice out there because you have a new council? out there because you have a new council and solicit new applicants and then you go through the appointment process as a council?
Yeah, because we weren't taking any applications during the prior council's period. We were waiting for the new council to be appointed. So, I'm looking forward to hearing when you're going to open that up and when you're going to close it and then obviously, when you'll be appointing somebody. I'm also curious about whether or not we're going to see a change in the schedule that has been typical for, I don't know, a decade as it pertains to Transportation Committee, Major, now Major K this last few years, and Finance Committee meeting I had intended to attend. And I keep looking at the website and it appears that there wasn't a meeting in January and I don't see anything yet for the month of February. And I reached out to Dolores and I've kind of earmarked it on my calendar. And then it sounds like Mr. Alanese has hinted to the fact that the public should potentially expect that the time is going to change, which I'm wondering, if you're changing the time, is that because it suits the council better or, or the public? Or what's, what's the thought process there? Because we've had...
Both. I'm a working person, so I'm not ashamed of that. And other people who are working also would like to participate.
So, should we expect that there now going to be evening meetings?
We're going to work that out between ourselves. And yes, I think a reading meeting would, would be appropriate for that. I don't see a change of date, I'll say that. You know, I guess the last Wednesday of the month, the fourth Wednesday of the month. It'll just be in the evening time.
So, good, okay.
Yes.
It'll stay, so, it sounds like if it was the fourth Wednesday of the month or the fourth Thursday, it'll stay consistent in that manner, but they'll become evening meetings. Okay.
Actually, it's the third...
Third, yes, thank you.
I think, I understood that that was an example.
That's right, yes.
So, that's fine. All right, thank you very much.
Is there any good in welfare from council?
I think there's a food bank fundraiser on Friday and I'm trying to think, I think we heard from Mr. Hosford about the other fundraiser coming up, so...
Senior Santa's having a chili kick-off also on 28th. 23rd? 28th, I believe, the day before, March 1st. So, they don't have an opportunity to advertise it inside of the, our local paper anymore, but check out the social media.
Yes, the 28th, because I'll be a judge, so...
Look into that, get a bite to eat thoroughly, it's always wonderful.
I'd like to, our community center has been overrun by children and science fair projects. If you get the opportunity to come see them, we have some amazing children that have these brains that I just can't imagine, the stuff that they, they come up with, they're absolutely fabulous. So, if you get the opportunity to come to the science fair, please do. It's impressive.
Thank you.
Actually, I believe tomorrow will be the last day. They were open, they were here last week.
No one's...
You know, I believe she posted on the door. She had them on the door earlier today. But she is here at 8:00 in the morning. We don't open until 9:00, so if you come and usually by 3:00 when school's out, she's on her way home. And now we are ready for closed session.
Yes.
It is 8:04 and we are going into closed session.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Performance Evaluation of the City Manager. There's nothing to report out?
That is correct.
And the meeting is adjourned at 10:00.
Yep.